City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmembers Daniel, Damian. I believe. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandro Avila, here. And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. Is there any public communications?
No, there are none.
Great. So we will move on from public communications. And I believe we have a open session, study session regarding policies and procedures for naming a facility. So I will hand that over to our, I believe it's our Parks and Recs Department.
Yes, at this point, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem councilmembers like to introduce Helen Hernandez, Program Supervisor and April Rojo, Program Coordinator. And they will provide the demonstration, the presentation. They have conducted a considerable amount of research. And hopefully, we could get some direction tonight in regards to the council's wishes. Helen, April.
Helen, you're on mute.
I thought about that. So good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We're excited tonight to share with you some of our findings that we've been researching the past month or so. The Department of Parks and Recreation actually works closely with a national organization called NRPA, or the National Recreation and Parks Association, and also with the State of California Parks and Recreation Society. So through these contacts, we've been able to conduct a lot of research. Next slide, please. We were given them the task of creating a policy. And generally, just so we have some parameters, most policies consist of different things, but they're very specific to what they're trying to address. So we just established that the policy we're looking to figure out where we're taking or based on the direction of City Council is something that would establish how we would do things specifically in the city of Balden Park and how it pertained to our properties, our facilities and locations here in our city. Next slide. Again, in just being involved with CPRS and NRPA, we're able to utilize their resources across the United States as well as the state of California. So we reached out to the city of Baltimore, friends in Chicago, but then also smaller entities closer to us in Irwindale, Duarte, South Almani, Almani. And then we took all of the facilities and agencies that we spoke with and picked out the top 10 that we'd like to share with you and who has some of the best practices out in the industry. Next slide. Close at home, we did reach out to our partners in Balden Park School District. They recently went through a process to rename a facility over at the school district, and they renamed one of their athletic fields. And they established a quite simple and concise policy, or I guess their ways that they'll be handling their procedures. Again, they were very, very straight to the point, very short and sweet. It's a one-page policy that they utilize. So they do have portions where, when they named a particular athletic field after a person in the community, they did wholesome meetings and gatherings. So that's something that was also we found to be typical of other agencies as they did their policy developments. Next slide. So we're proposing with some more direction, just some of the best practices we found out here in the industry. Typically, when a policy, when a facility was going to be named, there was always, the first step was always an application. So some things that we found consistent in everyone's application were that there is a valid reason for the facility to be named, that there was a lot of support from the community, whether it was family members or residents or participants in a group or organization that the person belonged to, or that there was a very strong push for a reasoning for it to be renamed after an individual. Other consistencies were that typically there was only one facility or park or street or tree or bench named after a person. It wasn't a duplication of the John Doe tree and the John Doe facility and the John Doe parking lot. It was consistent that there's just one location. Other things that we saw were that the plaques and the monuments that were placed to memorialize the person or the organization were all consistently done by the city. So each agency or city developed their own look or branding of how they wanted to dedicate items. So everything stayed consistent, and they were all coordinated with the style of the city. Next slide. As we drove in more into applications and specific policies, some policies were as long as 10 pages. Some policies were as short as one page. But things that we kept seeing repetitively and that were very important were that there was consistent rules of what not to consider. So there was not any consideration of derogatory names, things that kind of refer to culture, like topics such as like Redskins or like Apaches. Those were kind of things that were just not considered. Things that were definitely considered were just, I'm sorry, were, that were also again not considered, were things that had to do with the sales of alcohol, tobacco, pornography, firearms, things of that nature, just to avoid topics that might not be in the best choices for the city. Again, the other thing was that consistently, we kept seeing that there was no overuse of a commercialized name. So there wasn't like a Pepsi City Hall and then a Coca-Cola Teen Center. They were all just consistent with things that had to do with people who made a significant contribution in their communities. Next. And for this portion, as we move on to actual renaming of naming of facilities, we're going to move on to my colleague April Rojo. And April?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm going to go over the processes that we found in researching these policies. To rename new and existing parks and recreation facilities, the application was submitted directly to the Director of Recreation and Community Services. And in this application process, once the application is submitted, like Helen mentioned, there can, the application can include community support letters or any information or evidence behind the community supporting a name change of an existing or a new facility or park. And this application can be as detailed as maybe references or just general brief description. And then the, in most practices, the application was sent for review to a committee to further put, some of the committees would put like a list of names or the top three names and then submit that to City Council. Next slide. Same thing, the process for naming or renaming city facilities that are non-park and recreation facilities, the application will go to the City Manager's Office. And the application again should identify and state the reason for the proposed name change and specify the evidence or support from the community for this change. And the City Manager's Office, from the processes that we had researched, will then have staff review it, and an application with the staff report would be submitted to City Council for review and consideration to be sent to a naming committee. Again, those are all things that can be changed. Next slide. Naming criteria for all city facilities. So this was just kind of in general, a list that we saw as a list of importance in regards to categorizing why there should be a name change. The first one was historic names, names of historic events, groups, organizations or local representatives that made a major significance. And that could go back far as, as far back as Lucky Baldwin or like we have our Esther Snyder Community Center, things like that, historic names. And the second one was places and feature names. There are neighborhoods or areas that are known specifically like Walnut Creek Nature Park, Pleasant View Neighborhood, before Balden Park was Balden Park, it was known as Vinland. So things to look at that also incorporate history and individual groups or organizations. There should be a planned criteria to follow when using these type of honorees, living deceased groups or organizations. Some of the consistent suggestions that we had seen for this specific section was that name of persons or group or organizations of longstanding affiliation with the city of not less than 10 or more years, significant community service, involvement, contribution beyond the ordinary interest level, whose efforts have enhanced the quality of life and well-being of city residents, contributed to the preservation of the city's history and culture. And just someone that has made a development in our community, maybe a historic or a person involved in, we've had a few baseball players to make it to the professional level, things like that, anyone that has made some type of contribution either nationwide or in their work. And all this, next slide, please, with evidence of community support. One thing that we saw that was included in some of these policies was donation and sponsorships. There are policies that included how to handle donations of benches, trees, maybe scoreboards, and all that can be organized by the same criteria. And having donation procedures use sponsorship forms, and then the city manager approving that. And then lastly, our special event sponsorships, which this is similar to what we do with our downtown street market and our summer concerts in the park. We receive sponsorships for these events, and we display their names on a banner or their logos. So that is just a specific area or location where we would display their logo as a thank you for their donation or contribution to the event. And this concludes our presentation. Helen?
At this time, I think we're just looking for, we found some of the best practices in different agencies, and we're just looking for a little more direction. If you'd like us to write an actual application or develop an actual policy template to provide that? Or did you want to keep it simplified? Was there something that you liked in terms of how the school district did theirs with a simpler format? And just one pagers, there's really just an abundance of resources for us available, and we would just like some direction and feedback and how to proceed with the next steps of this process.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
First of all, thank you Helen and April for doing all the footwork as always. Thank you for all this great information. I think it is important to have something simple, not too complicated, but yet clear. What the school district did, I think it was pretty clear, and they had a lot of community input. So I would like it to be simple if my colleagues agree, just clear and to the point. Did I hear right that in most cases, they only have one area named as after a person, whether it's a building, a park, a street, a bench, just one location, correct? Okay, I would like to keep that, that's really important, that we only name one facility or location after a person. But if you can just keep it simple and clear like that, I think that would work. What do you think, colleagues?
I do, I want to start off by thanking you guys. I know that, I mean, I don't know how long you guys have been working for the city. I haven't been working for the city that long, but I do know that this has been a conversation that's happened before. I know that this policy is, you know, it's been, it's been necessary, and I think it should have happened a long time ago. I know that it happened when the teen center was being built, and there was discussion on naming that facility and that building and that area. So I think it's much overdue to have this process. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem. Obviously, we want to have a process in place so that, you know, so that everybody feels comfortable with it. But of course, you don't want to make it too complex where there's too much going on. I think as long as it's understandable and there's a process, then I think that that works.
And then I guess the next question would just be, do we want to ensure that there's a committee that's selected by either the City Council? Or do you want to utilize commissioners? Because then we can incorporate that into the policy of who the committee is made up of.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I think we can create committees, I don't know, I think we can create committees as the situations arise. Let's say we want to rename Barnes Park, for example. And so we, we announce, we say we're creating a committee who's interested in being in the committee, or we can already have a committee in place. But I think if we just have random people, because some people may have interest on renaming Barnes Park, some may not. So if we just create committees as new facilities come up of being renamed, we can do that, announce it for a certain period of time, create the committee, put the committee together, and then move forward with that. And then start getting public input. I know we can have public input and ideas of the names on, on who we not want to nominate, and it all goes to a vote. Did you come across that in your search?
We did, we did find that there was naming committees that were standing in some agencies, but in other agencies, they utilize commissioners from their existing commission pool. So they took like one from each commission that was standing, just kind of give everyone turns. So it was a variety of ways that they did that.
I would kind of want to stay away from the commissions already in place because they're already making decisions for other, other departments. And I would like to give other community members the opportunity to, to advise on things like this, you know, naming of a facility and, and ideas.
Absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, April and Helen, for working on this and for researching what other cities have done and sharing those best practices. It's much appreciated. I know we haven't, at least I've been a council member now since 2007, so 14 years. And you know, the idea, or actually the action to, the viable idea to name a facility after someone only came up once. I know there was a former council member that was lobbying to name a certain park after themselves. But by, you know, in terms of a viable proposal, it's only come up once. So I don't, I don't expect that this is going to be, you know, surfacing to the extent that, you know, we're going to have to control the activity with this policy. But I do appreciate the thoughtfulness, you know, that you put into this and asking what other cities have done. And I certainly appreciate that and want to reference that. I think when it comes to committees and commissions, it's a little bit of smoke and mirrors for me because a committee will be, you know, appointed, or committee members will be appointed by the council, I would imagine, unless there's some random drawing in appointing committee members, then essentially, it's just smoke and mirrors. And so, you know, let's put some thought into that. If we want a true community representation, that it wouldn't necessarily be the council appointing those committee members. And if we did do a committee, that it would be like a random kind of, I don't know, lottery of some kind, because otherwise, we know how this goes. You know, the council will appoint committee members that reflect our views, and it's basically just a rubber stamp. So if we do go in the direction of committees, I would just say, let it be if you want a true representation. Let it be like a lottery, you know, kind of selection process. Or we don't have to do committees at all, you know. But I'm just saying, what is the real intent of creating a committee? And let's think through that, just like you've thought through some of these other items. And let it be, you know, thorough and give it a process that's meaningful. The other idea, you know, that, that I have is when it comes to mobilizing community or gauging community support, I think it's a little loose, the way that we've defined it in this process. And I could understand, you know, why the flexibility, how it lends itself, especially if a council wanted to move forward with, you know, naming of a facility or a street or whatnot. So perhaps we can give a little more thought to the, you know, community support, how we gauge that. Is it by signatures? You know, like, for example, if there is a neighborhood that wants to bring in some permitted parking, then it requires a certain amount of signatures from property owners or residents in the area. And so I'm not saying that we should do that, but along those lines, when we're talking about community support, what does that mean exactly? And so is it enough to gain support from a family? Like, for example, I do, I do know that the Cruz, you know, the Cruz Baca, that was a man in the community that had a longstanding, you know, relationship in our community. And so the MetroLink station was named after him. And would it be, is it enough that his family supported the idea? Well, of course, his family is going to support the idea. So do we want to think through a little bit more of, you know, getting true community support? I mean, that's the reason for even having a policy, right? Or even having this discussion is there was some concern that, you know, we didn't vet it, we didn't get enough community support. So does it mean that if we're going to be naming a facility after someone, that we want to get X number of signatures, you know, from the community? If we're going to be naming a street after someone, or something along those lines? Because otherwise, I feel like it's just, it really is smoke and mirrors. So I would ask that we look at those two items, the committees, and then again, how those committee members would be appointed? And second, the community support, what that looks like exactly, what that means, just for, for something a little more meaningful. That's all.
Yeah, I want to kind of double that. I think it makes sense, right? I don't think, you know, if I put in commissioners, and they're voting on something to name, maybe after myself or my friend, then, you know, they're going to be obligated to vote in a certain way, right? And the same thing goes for council. So I don't think council or commissioners or anybody who the council would put in place would make it a fair process. So if you guys want to keep studying it, you definitely can. I encourage this to be a very, very transparent process, where of course, you know, people like myself and council members and commissioners and people that we're voting in and people who, you know, might feel that, that obligation about a certain way that, you know, that they have to be out of this process. This has to be a transparent process, and it has to be community-driven. So I, if you guys want to take this back, explore a little bit more, I am comfortable with that.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yes. Please go on, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll go after you.
And I, and I agree, the whole idea is to take that away from council and from anybody that's already been put in place by council, for example, so that it's transparent, it doesn't look like, oh, hey, I want Emmanuel Estrada's name here because I know him. No, that's not the idea. The idea is to be transparent and to have true community input. And yes, if you can research it, now what better way you can make sure it's very transparent that the true community input is being taken in consideration? And they're the ones deciding what the name, what the location is being named and the reason why it's being named a certain way. I think that's the best way we can go about it. Leave council out of it, we shouldn't be voting on it. We're just going to present the decision made by the group that's, that's in charge of that. And let's find a random way of selecting community members to make sure that they establish the ideas of why they're voting certain people in, by the name and all of that, and we stayed out of it. So it's more and more transparent for the community. I agree with you.
I believe Councilmember Hernandez had some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, these are all good comments. You know, I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Garcia and Mayor Pro Tem. Just a couple of items to think about, Helen and April. Again, thank you for your well-researched, you know, draft policy here, or at least the framework for us. The one thing I would add is, you know, that we, you know, as noted in your PowerPoint, it's, you know, someone who's out of office, right, who's not appointed. Absolutely, I agree with that. I didn't see in your PowerPoint, but I believe you mentioned that someone should be at least, you know, out of office, you know, or something of that nature for at least 10 years. If you could explain or perhaps highlight that section for us.
Well, every policy had a different parameter. The one we did see the most common was 10 years of significant contribution. So there was 10 years of service in a capacity as a Kiwanis Club member or maybe a school board member. We saw that consistently, it was different types of service, but generally was 10 years or more. And then just to answer about the reasoning why a lot of the applications ask for like supportive documentation, whether it was newspaper articles, character letter of references, small petitions. So you can ask for supplemental information in the application portion. It wasn't necessarily listed in the policies, but all the applications would ask for more supportive documentation or a history on the person that was being, a person or organizations are being selected. Because there was some that reference organizations being honored as well.
Right, thank you. And I would add all that to the application that's in the policy. Because some folks, you know, may have articles, may have letters of references and so forth.
Yeah, it kept the policy smaller, and the application was just a little more hiftier. And that could be altered easily without like going through a whole process again.
Right, as with all policies, they're a living document. So we could, we could modify them as, as we go through the process as council. The other thing of, that I also wanted to make sure that this doesn't preclude us through the policy is, you know, from time to time, you know, we name trees after a, after someone who's passed or has moved away, but typically, it's been after someone has passed away. I want to make sure that we don't necessarily take that process away from us necessarily. As you know, many of the trees that we have over at Morgan Park is something that we've done for our community members that have contributed. So just make sure that that doesn't necessarily hinder that process. Or if it's incorporated into this, we just got to make it very easy. Because again, that's something that we do from time to time. The other thing too of note is, you know, if someone passes, you know, in a tragic sense, right? Whether, and I'm not saying, you know, whether someone significant in the community passes away, right? Maybe they, they've been here 10 years, or they've lived here 20 years, or whatever the case may be. We still want to be, you know, have the opportunity to kind of go through that process and do, you know, name a tree or a, or a bench, or whatever it is that that significant member of the community or organization did for our city and our residents. So just, you know, if we can keep that in mind. The other thing is, and I just want to piggyback on Mayor Pro Tem's comment, I do support in naming of, you know, one facility, you know, like Esther Snyder as, after Esther Snyder. But I would ask, I would like for at least the policy to include, you know, the namings of, you know, significant rooms, like the computer lab or something like that, after a sponsor or someone else from the senior community or however that may be. That's another way of, you know, spreading the love, but also, you know, recognizing, you know, people's smaller contributions that perhaps, you know, they haven't reached the, the level of naming an entire building after them necessarily, but naming something of, you know, whether it's a gym, if we have, you know, we have, we obviously have several athletic accomplished athletes in our community. So somebody who's been there and, you know, been training since they've been a wee little lad and now a professional, those things that we can look at and so forth. Is that okay, Mayor Pro Tem? I wasn't sure if that's what you were speaking to or not. I just want to make sure.
Yes, and, and the idea behind this is naming a big facility, so big building, a big park, a street, trees and all that, I completely agree with you. If we want to name a tree or a bench after somebody, that, that should be easy for us to decide. The committee should be for big buildings, parks, streets, though that make a big impact, not so much the trees or the benches, things like that. And the, it's a good idea to maybe name the rooms in the Esther Snyder Community Center after somebody of need be, and I don't think that would need a big community input. It could just be decided because it's a small room. It's not something that you're going to drive up and say, oh, wow, look, that building is named after, after me. So no, just, just the big facilities and parks and streets, it's what I'm referring to, not so much the trees and benches and rooms. Thanks.
Thank you, and I just want to make sure that And I just want to make sure that we were clear on that, because the policy that we're discussing, you know, it wasn't necessarily clear. So I think the Mayor Protemp certainly cleared it up for all of us. And, you know, of course, for the Mayor Protemp, we'd name a big building after her, it wouldn't be a room whatsoever.
Of course.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, thank you. Can we have the policy come back to us now with this input? And we can, with a revised, and with a little, you know, a little bit more focused, and just more refined based on the input today? And then we can, you know, take action at that point? Whether we want to continue to refine it, or whether we want to adopt it? But that would be my, my motion, I guess.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreeance that it can come back, and, you know, there's more issues regarding transparency that can be implemented. So I think the council's all in agreeance, unless anybody has any objections.
None, thank you, April and Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I believe at this point, we will recess to co-session. So I will see all of you in the Zoom meeting.